Next public hearing.
Colleen, are those all set? Are we good?
Nice.
City Council will now come to it. Madam Clerk, we call the roll.
Counselors Cavasares?
Here.
Joseph Camara, Stephen Camara.
Here.
Alabety LaBeau?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Ponti, President Kadim.
Here. Well, we have several public hearings. The first are a couple on curb removals. The first is John Mandanka, 45 Dover Street. Request the removal of curbing as follows. Ten feet of existing driveway, proposed driveway access, ten feet, existing to be replaced, zero, total driveway access, twenty feet. This is again for 45 Dover Street. I'm going to see if there's any proponents.
Motion to open public hearing.
I'm sorry. Motion to open public hearing was made by Council Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Camara. Public hearing is open. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. Are there any proponents wishing to speak on the curb cut for 45 Dover Street? If you want to come down to the table, please, and just state your name and address for the record.
Yes.
Yep.
That's fine. Thank you. Hello, my name is John Mandunker. I live at 45 Dover Street. I'm the owner of the property. We have a ten-foot opening. We have a twenty, over twenty-foot driveway. That ten-foot open has been there since we bought the house in 1984. We're just trying to get two additional vehicles off the street without getting the opening. It's just causing damage to the vehicles as they're trying to get in and out. The curb cut won't really cause any problems with parking. What we're going to do is take five foot off each side of the ten feet that's there. So basically be five to the right, five to the left, so it'll make twenty feet that way. There's a telephone pole off to the right, which after the five-foot cut, it'll be about seven foot away from the driveway at that point. And so that's basically what we're trying to do. Hopefully, we won't be causing any problems, and you allow this to happen, just so we can get the vehicles in and out before the dam- they're just damaging vehicles as they're trying to get into that second spot. It's just, it's really hard to get in. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none. Are there any opponents? Seeing none.
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing was made by Council Mitchell, seconded by Council Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so vote in motion carries. The next public hearing is John Shasharo. Shasharo Realty Corp., 32 Doyle Street. Request the removal of curbing as follows. For the property of 168 Eighteenth Street, existing driveway, zero feet, proposed driveway access, thirty-two feet, existing to be replaced, zero, total driveway access, thirty-two. Motion to open a public hearing?
Motion so made.
Motion was made by Council Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, motion carries. Are there any proponents wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none. Any opponents?
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing was made by Council Mitchell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Stephen Camara. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so vote in motion carries. Next public hearing is for Manuel Olivera, 200 Bullock Street. Request is for 200 Bullock Street. The existing driveway is eighteen feet, proposed driveway access, fifteen feet, existing to be replaced, zero feet, total driveway access, thirty-three feet. Motion to open-
Motion to open.
Motion to open the public hearing was made by Council Mitchell, seconded by Council Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so vote in motion carries. Is there anybody wishing to speak on the matter of 200 Bullock Street? Proponents? Come on down.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Name and address.
200 Bullock Street. I'm here for my father, Manuel Olivera. Doesn't speak English too well, so I'm just going to interpret for him. We're proposing a horseshoe driveway. We're having an issue with the property. My mother-in-law has neck issues, so when she's backing out, she really can't look down Bullock Street. It's a heavily trafficked area. And if you look directly behind her, Sherman Street comes out right, and so she can't really turn. So the idea is to give her the horseshoe driveway, so she can come out and actually look all three ways as she's coming in, not to cause any accidents, public safety, excuse me, public safety, and also to keep the vehicles off the road, so.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask the audience to please keep the discussions to a minimum. It's a little distracting. Thank you. Any further questions for the individuals at the table? Seeing none? Any other proponents wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none? Opponents? Seeing none? Motion-
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing was made by Council Mitchell, seconded by Council Long. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so vote in motion carries. The next public hearing is for Mac Velozza, 350 Eldridge Street. Request the removal of curbing as follows. 350 Eldridge Street, existing driveway, twelve feet, proposed driveway access, sixteen feet, existing to be replaced, zero feet, total driveway access of twenty-eight feet.
Motion to open public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing was made by Council Mitchell, seconded by Council Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so vote in motion carries. Proponents wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none. Opponents? Seeing none?
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing was made by Council Mitchell, seconded by Council Cavasares. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so vote in motion carries. The next public hearing is for a joint pole location. Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon, New England, Inc., for one jointly-owned pole location as follows. Stafford Road, one jointly-owned pole location. National Grid requests to install a new riser pole for an existing service at Maplewood Park. There is a plan to remove all overhead conductors at the park, so existing service will remain in underground supply in accordance with Plan Number 25080234 dated October 12, 2017.
Motion to open public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing was made by Council Mitchell, seconded by Council Cavasares. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so vote in motion carries. Proponents wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none. Opponents? Seeing none?
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing was made by Council Mitchell, seconded by Council Cavasares. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so vote in motion carries. Stand of our public hearings. Motion to adjourn was made by Council Cavasares.
Second.
Seconded by Council Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so vote in motion carries. City Council is now adjourned. You want to let me open up finance? Committee on Finance will now come to it. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselors Cavasares?
Here.
Joseph Camara, Stephen Camara.
Here.
Alabety LaBeau?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Ponti? And President Kadim?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. I do just want to let my colleagues know and the audience know that Council Camara is unable, Council Joseph Camara is unable to be here tonight because he's recuperating from a medical procedure. All is well, and he will be attending the next council meeting. And Councila Ponti is out of the country, so he's probably watching the meeting via internet. Sure.
I don't know about that. You lie elsewhere to it.
First item on the agenda is a discussion with the administration and representatives of the Collins Center regarding the Building Capital Improvement Plan. Oh, I'm sorry. Citations. I apologize. You can do it.
Can I do that?
Yeah, you can. Okay.
Get the citation.
She had it?
There is a citation for Tracy Wright. Come on down, Tracy. Tracy Wright has been an employee of the City of Fall River for 24 years. Unfortunately, due to some medical issues, she was forced to leave her position. But Tracy, in 24 years, has worked for the city. What did you like, come right out of high school? Worked in the planning department for 20 years, was 15 years involved with the union, serving every elected capacity with the union, and 10 years with the Insurance Commission. Tracy, on behalf of the City Council, I would like to thank you for your service. Wish you nothing but good health for your retirement after 24 dedicated years of service. If all of our employees were like you, it would be wonderful. I know this woman would stay late if she had to, come in early if she had to. When you called her for a question, you got a call back immediately. If she had to look something up, she would tell you and get back to you, and she always got back to you. So Tracy, for the years that I've been here, you have been wonderful. You've been a support, and I do wish you the best.
Thank you, everybody that came here. Some friends took some time out, and I know we'd much rather be doing other things. It's very hard to leave the city. It's not what I wanted to do, but I am faced with very serious health condition, not only leaving the city as a physician, I also am leaving the city as a resident, moving away so that my mother can take care of me with my upcoming surgeries. But I want to thank the friends that I've made. I have learned a lot, good, bad. I've seen a lot, heard a lot, but it's been an education that I couldn't pay for, and I just want to thank everybody that came here. And thanks especially to Linda for recognizing all that I've done. It's been a long road. I'm happy to move on and get my health better, and there's a lot more to just working, so I hope people realize that in life, there's a lot more than just what's going on here. Take care of yourselves, because without your health, you have nothing. But thank you, everybody. Thank you. Not my best angle. Sorry, guys. Thank you, everybody.
Linda, that's a big if. If we get out early. They're still sitting up.
Were there any citizen input time?
There's no citizen input time, but there's a couple more citations.
Thank you. There's one more citation on the agenda. Chief Lynch, would you join me, please? Jennifer, will you join us, too? Tim? Thank you.
We're going to do this one at a time.
So this citation isn't on the agenda because we were trying to keep it quiet, and had I not been perusing social media, I might not have known about it at all, except that someone posted it on there. Police and fire and EMS departments, our paramedics are not very boastful when talking about themselves, and they're not very good at recognizing themselves. So I'm glad that Jen posted that our own Beth Fons was named the Distinguished Paramedic of the Year, and she just received this recognition. Can you come down? This was by the Greater Fall River, New Bedford EMS. So we have a resolution for you from the City Council. Be it resolved that the City Council hereby extends its commendation to Beth Ann Fons in recognition of receiving the 2017 Distinguished Paramedic of the Year Award. Be it further resolved that the Fall River City Council extends best wishes for continued success and that this resolution be entered into the records of the City Council adopted November 14, 2017.
I know there's probably no one more deserving of this honor than Beth, and when I was told that she was getting that award, it was my pleasure to attend it. And she got this reward because Jen Rodricks wrote an unbelievable letter with such eloquence that really described Beth's accomplishments over the years. In 27 years as a paramedic, Beth has done so much for the EMS division, not just in the City of Fall River, but really in the region. And she's a key player along with Director Olivera, Captain Rodricks, and the whole EMS division, and why we are so well-respected in the city. Beth has always been an innovator. I've known her for 27 years, when she first came on as the first female paramedic. She is somebody that has always thought ahead of her time, always looking ahead, and because of her and the other leadership of the EMS division, we are far ahead of everyone else. I know as a fire chief, Beth has made my job so much easier. If she has a fault, it's that sometimes I tell her, "Beth, you have too many pots on the stove." And her answer to that is, "I'll get a bigger stove." So as the leader of this department, it's my pleasure and my honor. Beth, from my heart, you deserve this, and I'm glad that Councila Bo recognized that and all the counselors. So Beth, again, my congratulations and thank you, and I hope you stay around for a long time. Continued success.
Speech.
I would like to say thank you to all of you, and we're a good team from the top down. I couldn't do it without everybody behind me and including you, because you all support our efforts and everything that we try to accomplish. And EMS division, from the boots on the ground to the leadership, are the best in the state. So this isn't just me, it's everybody behind me. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, folks. I'll turn it over to you. Presentation?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council. We are pleased to be before you this evening with the end product of a community compact award that the City of Fall River received from the Baker Polito Administration, and it was specifically designed to enable communities to implement best practices. And there were a whole host of areas that qualified. In our particular case, for this particular community compact, and I would say Fall River has been fortunate, we've received several from the state of Massachusetts, but this particular one was to enable us to do a comprehensive capital plan for the buildings within both the municipal and school side of our government. And we're here before you this evening. Monica Lamboy was the consultant that was retained by the City of Fall River. She is from the Collins Center at UMass Boston. What we're going to do is to give you an overview of the two facets of the report, one focusing more on the organizational structure of our maintenance divisions, and then the other actually getting into the finances of the capital projects. This evening, we intended it to be an overview. We welcome your questions. Unfortunately, Mr. Gallagher could not be with us this evening because he, too, is having medical procedure, but hopefully, we can answer your questions, at least by virtue of the overview. Once the Council has had opportunity to review this, you're going to see that we're suggesting a schedule of product, projects. It's being done over a five-year timeline. Certainly, we welcome the counselor's input regarding the timing of those projects, and we can certainly shift those projects as need be. But what I would tell you is that Mrs. Sahadi also worked very closely with Monica from the Collins Center to assure that the projects could be completed so as to respect the $10 million debt, annual debt ceiling that the city has placed upon itself, so as not to unduly tax the operating budget, the general fund budget that has to support the debt service that we encounter. So again, the projects were done with an eye towards trying to keep the annual debt expense within a manageable level. You're also going to see that there are some projects in here that are anticipated to be funded through the general operating budget, so we're not necessarily advocating loan order for all of these repairs. And I guess the last point I would make is on the school side. We do have an accelerated repair program, and so many of those repairs are eligible for MSBA reimbursement assistance, which is on a about 80% level. So there are a number of financial factors that have influenced the timing and the scheduling of these projects, but again, we're open to your input and advice as to how we may proceed. And I do want to ask Mr. Ken Pachico to please join us at the table. Ken is well-versed on the projects on the school side. I believe the school committee has received its presentation initially, but he's here in the event that you have any questions regarding the school projects that have been scheduled. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Monica Lamboy. Again, she's going to run through a PowerPoint. You do have hard copies of those if you want to follow along. It is double-sided. We're saving paper.
Thank you.
And you're welcome, Counselor. And so once she's been through the presentation, again, we welcome your questions. Monica?
Good evening. Thank you, Council President, members of the City Council. My name is Monica Lamboy. I'm a senior associate with the Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management at UMass Boston. Our group was created by the state legislature to offer technical assistance to cities, towns, school districts in Massachusetts and elsewhere. With the understanding of how hard the staff works just to keep the daily operations going, it's hard to take time to take a step back, reflect on what's working for the organization, what's not working, and what kinds of changes can be made, and that's the kind of work that we do. We're very data-driven, and we do a lot of analysis before we present findings. So as Kathy said, I have two components to the presentation. The first piece is an organizational study of facilities' maintenance services, both for the city and the schools, and the second is the capital improvement plan focused on facilities. So with that, and we'll have time for questions and comments at the end. So in terms of facility maintenance, what we were looking at was the operations, the staffing levels, the expertise, the tools and equipment that are available to the staff in facilities. We interviewed key staff people. We reviewed budgets, organizational charts, job descriptions, where work order data was available. We did review it to see the timing, how long it took to get different types of tasks done, participated in tours of several buildings, and really compared to best practices in facilities management, facilities maintenance. There's a lot of private sector data that's available and also public sector, because some of the uses are a little different. What we found with the city and the schools, first was strong institutional knowledge. The leadership of both departments have been with the city and the schools for quite some time and have worked together for quite some time, which has created a partnership. But each one of them can, off the top of their head, tell us what's going on with various buildings at any one given time. The commitment of the staff to the city and the school district is seen by low staff turnover, and at the schools, access to a modern electronic work order system, which for the staff allows them to organize the work timely and track everything. And for policymakers such as yourselves, it's a wealth of data to see how long it takes to have various things completed, and that's only available on the school side right now. Challenges: understaffing, differences between the departments in terms of automation. In both cases, the staff operate predominantly in response mode, being unable to get to preventative maintenance, and that's a sort of cycle where if you can't get to the preventative maintenance, then no surprise, there are more emergencies and more calls for service. And if you can't get onto the front end, it's always kind of chasing around afterward. A very large inventory, both on the city and schools, and I'll give you some data about that, a relatively high level of unmet capital need, and my understanding is until the effort that we did, there wasn't sort of a comprehensive look at facility capital needs. Now we have that cataloged. It's available to you. It's your product to use going forward. So what do the city facility staff have to manage? They have approximately 557,000 square feet in city buildings. The average age, the average age of the buildings is 73 years old. They range in size from 600-square-foot comfort stations or lavatory facilities at various parks to the 120,000-square-foot public works building. And the facilities are distributed across the city, which means there's travel time between to and from. In addition to the municipal buildings, and often forgotten, are the buildings that are municipally owned as a result of tax takings, where property owners have largely walked away from their property. 458,000 square feet of buildings that are tax-taking buildings, nearly 90 years old. And one would think, well, they're empty, therefore, there's not a lot of work that needs to be done, but it's not the case because there has to be eyes on these buildings to make sure that no one has broken in, that there's not any kind of issue, because it is a real quality-of-life issue for the neighborhoods and a potential nuisance and public safety hazard. And actually, as I was undergoing this project, Chris was talking to me at a gas leak that he was responding to in one of the vacant buildings while trying to help me with the effort we were undertaking here. On the school side, there's 19 facilities. The majority of them are schools, but there are also two administrative buildings, 2.23 million square feet of school building, with an average age of under 50 years, but a large span between four years old and 127 years old. So the average in the- So the average in the case of the schools is not really illustrative, but rather the range is. So looking at the city staff, what are they responsible for? They're responsible for capital planning and implementation. This would be for a major renovation, a new building, everything from conceptualizing it to scopes of work and working with the consultants. Facilities maintenance, which we break down into multiple pieces. Preventative maintenance, as I mentioned, is work that's done before it becomes an issue. Work order requests are typically by staff, or even the internal staff in facilities will say, "The door is broken," or "The light needs replacing." That's a work order. And then response to emergencies, which sometimes can be all hands on deck, because if an emergency is so substantial, such as a leaky roof or a pipe that's broken. They're also responsible for grounds maintenance around city buildings and custodial services. In some buildings, there are some private custodial services as well. And then, in addition, park design and construction does fall under the facilities side of the house. This is an org chart of the staffing. There are 14 FTE as of 2018. All of them report directly to the director. There are no supervisors in the group. The first box on the left is the maintenance group, carpenter, electrician, HVAC, painter, plumber. There are some custodians, which I believe some of them work in this building here. And then we have two groundskeepers who are out mowing lawns or maintaining the grounds. They also often are the eyes on some of these vacant buildings, since they're already out in the field. And a senior account clerk who has to manage all the invoices, the paperwork, the calls from people in different departments that need service. This is a look at the budget from 2016 to 2018. One complement is the increased transparency in the 2018 budget, because you've broken it out into more line items, so we can now see monies for ADA services, for ADA work, the custodial services, maintenance services. But overall, the 2018 budget, while it's higher than 2017, is lower than 2016. And of it, we went into, look at the actual expenditures. We only found about $368,000 that was directly on point for work in buildings, which translates to about 36 cents per square foot of municipal building, of dollars that are spent either for consultants, or elevator repair, et cetera. I want to spend a little second talking about preventative maintenance and why it is a goal to aspire to. Studies have shown that every dollar spent on preventative maintenance results in $2 in savings. If we think about our house, if we let the boiler go, and it exploded, and there's water everywhere, there's a lot more work. If the roof ends up having a hole, you've now got water in your, inside your building. You have potential walls that have to be repaired. You have potential health issues. So preventative maintenance does benefit. It increases the life expectancy of the buildings, because you're not letting them get into disrepair. It prevents emergencies. Calling people out in the middle of the night because the pipe broke is very costly. Sometimes when a piece is damaged, it will also damage other pieces nearby, so there's a secondary failure that happens when a building gets to a failure point, reduces overtime. You can find equipment that costs a lot to maintain, either a lot to repair or replace it early, and improved comfort and safety for occupants. For the schools in particular, there have been studies that show that the quality of the space actually influences educational attainment, which makes sense if you think about how distracted kids can be if there's water dripping in the classroom, if it's too hot, if it's too cold. That can actually affect test scores. Maybe not for us grownups working in buildings, but for the kids, it does. This is a graphic that shows what happens financially when your building starts to deteriorate. On the left-hand side is the condition, where excellent is at the top, failed is at the bottom, and then the age is to the right. So if you see early in the curve, when it's a new building, the condition is excellent. As the building ages, it costs 20 cents per square foot to maintain. But then if it goes deteriorates a little bit longer, a dollar to renovate, and then eventually, $12. So it's an exponential, it's an exponential curve where the deferred maintenance results in costs that are magnitude greater than if it was addressed early on. Some of the findings. City facilities' maintenance is seriously understaffed, and I don't use that term lightly. Looking at the space that needs to be maintained suggests that there should be 8.4 maintenance workers. We have five currently for a shortfall of 3.4 full-time equivalents in maintenance. As I mentioned before, the director is supervising all of the staff, giving them direction on a daily basis of what to do, so there's no intermediate level that can do some of that work. In addition, he also does all the long-range work for the department. Recommendations here are to immediately reinstate the project manager position. This was a position that existed previously that could work on scopes, or bids, or perhaps finding grant funds, or doing the long-range kind of effort to help the facilities director. In addition, we're recommending adding three FTE over the next two years, carpenter, electrician, and plumber. And recommended, and this came from the staff, and I think it's very innovative, the idea of bringing on an architect, owner's project manager in-house, so that they could work on some of the projects that require building permits in-house. And it could be funded actually from the capital budgets of the projects, or at least a portion of it could. It's not unusual, this is done elsewhere, where the projects are used to fund some of the staffing time that would be implementing them. Number two, the department lacks an electronic work order system. The processes right now are manual at best. Any kind of documentation would be paper, if it does exist. But typically, people call either into the office staff or to the director directly, and he attempts to deploy staff in response to that call, which is ripe for missing something, not being as efficient as we could be. Maybe we could do three things at the same building, four things, if you had a work order system, and you could see what was queued up for a particular building. We're recommending either leveraging the software that the school district has presently, which is specific to schools, but could be used for other general buildings, or purchase software. It's a wise investment, because the staff time savings will be tremendous. And for yourselves, when you're making hard budget decisions, you'll be able to see where the dollars are being utilized via the work order system. We're also recommending in the financial system that you set up work order, set up cost centers for each of the buildings, so that if a part is purchased, it would be tied back to a building. If hours are spent by staff, in the work order system, they would record that they were at that building and how long they were there. So you'll start to get the multi-year and the large-scale data about what's happening with the buildings. In addition, we found that the department operates largely in response mode, where emergencies and work orders take up the vast, vast majority of time. And as I said before, that's a self-fulfilling prophecy, because they're not able to get to the preventative maintenance, and that creates more emergencies. We do recommend hiring an outside consultant to develop a multi-year preventative maintenance schedule for each building. So they would go and look at the filters, the lights, the various kinds of systems, and say, "In February of each year, we do this, and in July, we do that." That could be plugged into the work order system, so that it'll automatically kick up, "Oh, it's time to do this right now." So it's not about a single person or two people trying to remember this off of the top of their heads. We also found a lot of time was spent going to supply shops, to hardware stores, and a modest in-house inventory of parts could ultimately save time, with the caution that it shouldn't be a really large inventory of parts in-house, but rather some of those things that are used very frequently, and that you don't have to make a separate trip each time you need them. Overall, we found that the physical inventory for the city includes quite a bit of vacant space and less than optimal space. Approximately 60% of the square footage that they're maintaining or monitoring is vacant. And we found that the community maintenance facility is not efficient or really adequate for a modern-day public works operation.
Could you repeat that last statement?
The community maintenance facility?
Yes.
Which is the former incinerator?
Yes.
Yes. So if you look at the amount of space that's occupied by literally equipment from the previous use, the actual space available for city operations is relatively limited. And recently, I believe, the trash company has occupied some of that space to do what seems like very wise work to help reduce tipping costs. But the amount of space for public works, who have vehicles that should be stored inside, they should have space to be able to wash and maintain their vehicles. They have valuable items, pipes, different kinds of wiring, et cetera, that should be stored inside in a safe, secure location. That's not the state of the facility, as far as we understand it.
Thank you.
So we think it would be positive to have an architect do a space needs assessment, where they would meet with each of the departments, talk about what their needs are. Are they customer-facing? Are they not customer-facing? And develop two to three alternatives for how much space does the city need for its operations, and how well does that align with the inventory that you have presently? And then have an engineer also do an engineering assessment of the buildings.
No, Counsel, if we can just let them finish the presentation, and then we'll go down. Counselor C. One has raised his hand already.
We did find, I think it was four or five leases for space of city departments, predominantly for storage of equipment and vehicles, but also the South End Library. The facilities' maintenance, community maintenance, traffic, and water division do have vehicles stored in leased property. We will say we do a lot of vehicle maintenance studies, that vehicles that are stored in the open, they, their lifespan is not as long as vehicles that are stored in heated indoor locations. So by putting out a $240,000 loader and leaving it outside to the elements, you're not getting the lifetime of that vehicle that you would if it was indoors. Recommend, consider building a new facility for community maintenance that has adequate space for storage and parking for other departments. We noted there's six fire stations built between 1905 and 2001. The equipment the fire uses has gotten markedly larger over time, and some of the fire trucks are not able to be parked within the older buildings. We think an assessment by a specialist in fire operations could look at the geography of the community response times and help you develop a plan for facilities for fire. That's the end, sort of, of our organizational study, with one caveat, finding 12 actually relates to the capital improvement plan, so I'm going to move into that area. The total requests that we received from the schools and the city side was $71.4 million of capital requests. They're itemized at a high level of detail for each of the different buildings. 46% of the requests for the schools, and 54% were for the city. 14 of those project requests were for $1 million or greater. Just trying to be efficient in prioritizing this, the, we recommended that the city Windows project, which is a $6 million, the Government Center Windows project, be done perhaps under an energy efficiency umbrella, that you could meet with an ESCO and see if they would take that on, that the Bank Street Armory would be done by grant funds, and to look at the use of the Veterans Center, which does need some capital investment, but also look at its role for city staff. Okay, moving forward into the positive side. So with the assistance of the team here, we were able to come up with a recommendation for a capital improvement plan for fiscal 2018 to '23. Incorporated in there is $23.9 million of new investment in city and school facilities, and this is all funds that are available. The spending plan for the general fund is on the screen. We worked with a figure, there's a column called "Available Resources." We worked with a figure of $500,000 of general fund monies available in each of the years, starting 2019 to '23, understanding that the city has a cap of $10 million for its capital investment. We were able, with that $500,000, to fully fund the first three years of the plan, as you see it here, and I'll go into detail what this actually means. There is, the final two years, were not fully balanced. We are consciously submitting to you a not fully balanced plan, because how important those items are in year four and five, and also, we're aware that the overall debt service is declining in those years. And so, as you move forward into the future, there is an ability to use some of the reductions in debt service and apply them to some of these facilities' projects. Included in here is a large project for the Resiliency Preparatory Academy, so it has its own column. Also, about this table, you have the fiscal year on the left. Then the first column is called "General Fund Pay-as-you-go." Those are items that are paid directly by the general fund. No debt is incurred. They tend to be smaller. I think we use $100,000 as our threshold, but you don't have to pay interest payments on that, so that's cheaper. Then the second column is "General Fund Debt." Those are for larger projects. This is the debt service estimates for each of the items that we'll describe in a little bit. Moving on. Within this five-year plan is $18.5 million of school projects, 77.4%, includes $8.8 million renovation for Resiliency Preparatory Academy, playground improvements at a number of the schools, windows at a number of the schools, and other boilers, roofs, asbestos removal, and retaining, and a retaining wall at various schools. I didn't list all of them. You have the spreadsheet in your report. On the city side, we have a plan for $5.4 million in investment in city projects, 22.6% of the total. These include roof repair and replacement at the Flint Fire Station, the library and the police station, the exterior of the Central Fire Station, which I understand is in need of significant attention, the roof of the Stanley Fire Station, other work on the floors, which have some structural issues, and the garage doors, so the vehicles can get in and out, Globe Fire Station roof, the doors, garage doors at fire stations. This is an item that is routine in many fire stations. The doors need to be replaced with some regularity. At Government Center, electrical upgrades that will bring you to current standards of electricity with the amount of equipment and computers that are operating here, and the fire safety, the electricity is critically important, roofs, and improvements to office space. The Kennedy Park office would be renovated. And I can answer questions in detail, but that's overall, I think, a pretty comprehensive chunk of city capital needs. Adjusting closure. The strengths that we saw were the commitment to the cities and the schools exhibited by the staff in facilities' maintenance, the collaborative working relationship, and this focus on capital planning for facilities. The challenges, even with the capital investments, is that staff need to be available to maintain what you are investing in, the lack of technology, the inability to get to the preventative maintenance, and just this need for sort of an overall look to see, does the square footage available for city operations really align with modern-day workforce and work expectations?
Counselor C. One, Counselor Capocero.
Thank you. You know, it's very, very refreshing to see some outlook, some fiscal outlook when it comes to capital planning, and really, it's really, really refreshing. Just a couple of questions about things that you said. When you mentioned that there was, I can't remember the number of vacant square footage, when was that number taken? Because I noticed when I went through the document that you sent us, the building on Hotwell Street, the Old Sylvia School, was still on there. Were those buildings factored into that still, or were those, are those taken out for this purpose?
I am, this was done in the summer, so there may have been, we were aware that there were some buildings that were going to hopefully be put out to bid, so this would have been, it's probably a little bit old at this point.
Okay. And just for clarification from the administration, that building, already the purchase and sales agreement is already all set, the person who proposed to buy that owns that building at this point in time, correct?
There has not been a closing council, but it's imminent. This is Hotwell Street, right, to Sylvia?
Yes. We were told months ago that the closing had happened.
I'm understanding, and I can double-check on that, but that there was one small issue that needed to be addressed, and it actually relates to the PAL. So there was a complication. I'll get further clarification for you, Counsel.
We're going to be having a real estate meeting soon, so we probably shouldn't be talking about that right now.
Very good, yeah, thank you.
We'll definitely talk about this. How much vacant space do we actually have within occupied buildings? Is there any space that's underutilized? Is there any space that's underutilized because of damaged portions of the building, or just space that's not utilized that we could utilize better?
We didn't do sort of an assessment of all of the buildings, whether they were utilized. I did mention the community maintenance building. I believe the veterans' building may have limited municipal operations inside of that. Trying to reflect on whether there were any others. On the other hand, I know that some buildings are very densely occupied, such as this building, so it's a little bit of both.
And again, it's very refreshing to have somebody with outside eyes looking at the city and saying, these are some of the things that we should be addressing, because one of the things that you pointed out is there's no intermediate level in the building department staffing, and one of the questions that we need to be talking about on a regular basis with all departments is span and control. Do we have the opportunity to be able to do the job necessary and make sure that everybody has the capacity to do it while having the linear path? So what about economy of force? When you, when a project needs to get done, say for repair purposes, are we able to put all those assets into one place appropriately in order to be able to make sure that it gets done in an expedited manner, or because of the fact that we're 3.4 FTE short, the economy of force isn't there as well?
I think it's extremely hard to plan ahead, even on a daily basis, in the maintenance operation.
Okay.
I'm confident they come in and say, this is what we're going to accomplish today, and something else many, many times will intercede some level of emergency, because they really are in a triage, emergency response mode with the facilities.
Okay.
And just to add to that, Counsel, we have talked to Mr. Gallagher at length, and as you know, we had recommended increased staffing for this department, but it did not survive the budget process. But his expectation is that if he had two electricians, he could assign one to a specific project, and that person could be dedicated to that project for the day, because there would be a second electrician that would be able to respond to the emergencies and the work orders and the things that are not as well planned. So he, his expectation was is that adding those additional tradesmen would allow him to do more of what Monica is suggesting on a day-to-day basis.
And Madam Administrator, I appreciate the statement, but one of the things that we need to do in order to be able to help span and control is get that mid-level person first before we add those additional positions. I think that might be the appropriate, so if you're talking about those two positions, maybe the third intermediary position would be the appropriate approach if you're going to add just those two. So, I hear you.
Again, Counsel, we could certainly add additional, but I think what's happening is he's so thin, if you will, that you could have better utilization if you had people actually working, Monica.
Yeah. And you could also have a tradesperson who was a lead, a team lead, as opposed to a specific supervisor that would offer that level of oversight, time cards, vacation slips, you know, are you where you're supposed to be? But they would still be able to do hands-on trade work.
Now, just kind of doing a cost assessment for something along those lines, if you had a couple of team leads, because they're also doing their jobs, you'd have to have more than one person, you'd have to probably have a couple. You'd have to compensate them more because they're union-paid, and maybe it would be more efficient to just have that one intermediary person. And I'm just thinking dollars and cents-wise, but you bring up a very good point, and it's something that we all need to take a look at, and how we can best spend money and make sure that the span and control is something that's operating fluidly. I really, really appreciate this. This is something that's been a long time coming, and I want to applaud the people from the charter who are forcing this kind of stuff to happen, not just with this, but with the fiscal situation and financial planning and long-term planning, just that's kind of built into the document. I know I'm looking at one of the people, at least his spouse was on the committee. I think we're kind of heading in the right direction, so thank you so much for the work that you did. Thank you for helping out with the process, and I'm looking forward to see how this all turns out. Let's stick to it, and let's try to follow a direction as opposed to operate or continue to operate by fire drill. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor C6, Counsel Spurra. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, seven, I'm off today.
It's okay.
Long day.
Um.
I know.
Did you yourself go to every one of these buildings in the city? Or were you just giving the information on the age of the building, et cetera?
My colleague did go to most of the buildings. I don't think he went to all of them, and also took photographs. And he subsequently transitioned to another project, but I've talked to him at length about all the facilities.
I'm very interested in the community maintenance building, because there was damage done, as you know, to the, to that building. Have we, Mrs. Viveras, received the insurance settlement yet for the claim on Atlantic Waste?
No, I think the value was determined, and what we ended up doing, Counselors, I believe we placed it through our own insurance, and then they will be contacting the responsible party's insurance, which I think has happened.
I thought the assessor.
I don't know, Mrs. Sahadi, are you?
I thought the assessor was already there to assess the value.
Oh, that's all been done, Counsel, yes.
Okay, and we didn't get a check from them yet? Because my concern is, in that building, is three truckloads of contaminated recyclables, contaminated recyclables, which means that you're going to end up with rodents and everything else in there. So it's been months since that occurred, and that hasn't been cleaned out. I think that that needs to be cleaned out. And you bring up a very good point. All of the equipment that we've purchased, and this council has taken votes to buy new equipment, and that equipment remains outside in the weather. Perhaps a lot of the older vehicles that are there, that within the past year and a half, nothing has gone to auction, that we should sell that to get some money to fix that place up. That place is shameful with the new homes there, but I'm really concerned with all the truck, the three truckloads that are there. And if the insurance, if the, you know, mediator, assessor, whatever came in, what do they assess the damage at? Do you know, Mrs. Sahadi?
Can we just, the valid points, but if we can just bring this up, maybe with Public Safety or Resolution, I just know Monica has been here for a little while, she's got some travel time, so if we can just stick to the capital plan.
Okay.
Questions?
But that's, that was a concern of mine, that's why I asked if Monica had been down there to see it, because when things like that happen, it only causes for further deterioration of a building, so we want to make sure that we look at that. I'll wait for an answer, you can just send it to me via email. Thank you, Mr. President, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor C5, Counsel Long.
It's good programming, good job.
I find many of your findings are not shocking. I think we knew some of them were coming at us, so, but there were a couple of things that I, that I looked at here, and when we went to city facilities, we talk about 557,000 square feet. How many buildings on the city side? I don't see that. Of the 557, it says 458 is vacant, or is that the 458 and the 557 together?
So the, from page seven to page eight is a table of each of the individual city And the 559,000 are municipal use buildings. In addition, there's 458,000 that are formerly privately owned, but are now being maintained by the, do you have the, the thick report? Page seven to eight.
Okay. I was just wondering about, that's fine, I can take a, no, I know that, that's working without it. On the city's facility responsibilities, when you looked at that, you looked at capital planning, implementation, facilities maintenance, preventive maintenance, response to work orders. Did you break down any percentages of the time that's been spent, that is being spent at the present?
The lack of a work order system means that's largely impossible to do, because not all work is even being documented on paper. There's a lot of work that they're just doing, finishing it, and moving on to the next one. So were I to even go through the exercise, I would not get a valid number for you that would be useful.
Yeah, but we can guess, it's Band-Aids, and we're just doing what we can to keep everything rolling. I looked at the two that were, when we looked at the budget piece here, where you bring up maintenance is at 36 cents per square foot, and then when I go over to your facilities maintenance cycle and you look at that piece, what would be the best practices if you're doing it by square foot? What is best practices?
You know, I did look at that to try to find some other citations. I can go back through my notes. A lot of the data is for private sector buildings, that's where you get it, and it's not exactly an apples-to-apples. I can try to send Kathy some of the studies that I did find, but I didn't feel comfortable, I don't put a number here unless I feel really comfortable with it, so I didn't feel like I could really peg it to a particular number.
It's a lot higher than 36 cents.
It's higher than 36 cents per square foot.
I was just, I was just trying to figure, I'm going to say we're probably somewhere over a dollar, I would think. So we're way behind on that. The other thing that I find interesting was the, on one side of this, we find that approximately 60% of the inventory is vacant, and then on the other side, we have 46,500 square feet of leased space. And it just doesn't, it just, that kind of goes like, well, if we've got vacant space, why are we leasing space?
It's a very good question, and it was something we went and looked at. I think the light went on when we understood that most of it was to store vehicles in a safe and secure location, or tools and equipment, and there just really isn't another municipally-owned building that can do that.
Did you look at maybe retrofitting those buildings to make them, utilization of, for storage of vehicles, that type of?
I actually did have a conversation about one of the mill buildings, and there were issues with where the structural columns were, that it could not be retrofitted for large public works vehicles.
And I think really what skews the equation, Counselor, is clearly the Lewiston Street facility. I mean, the vast majority of that is not utilized. It used to be the, it used to house the incinerator, which has now been shut down and has contamination and cannot be utilized. We wouldn't allow people in that section. So in some instances, it's not even functional, but yet it shows up as square footage available as part of the buildings. But clearly, the storage of vehicles is the need.
And then when we look at the capital improvement plan for proposed 23.9 million of capital investment, you know, it's interesting to me when we look at the first five years, how we basically stay on the budget, when we do the pay-as-you-go plus the debt financing, and then in years like two, 2022 and '23, it goes up exponentially quite a bit on the debt financing. Why would that be?
Yes. In general terms, the items you borrow for in year one, you're still paying for in year five, and you layer on the ones that you borrow in two, and three, and four, and five. I think we also put some of the larger projects later, that there's work to develop drawings, to pursue grant funds, et cetera. So some of the larger projects come on later in year four and year five, or at least are programmed in those years right now.
So my question would be, if, if, if we were able to implement this program, we're looking at basically six, seven years of capital improvements over?
It's a, it's a five-year plan, except there's one item in the current fiscal year that we have noted, a small item, so it reads as six, but it's really from 19 to '23.
And that would be financed out over how, how long?
We have a debt schedule in the spreadsheet that I've provided to the staff, but for buildings, you can do '20, '25, some of the equipment you might want to do for '15, air handling equipment, those sorts of things. But each item has a term that we put associated to it.
So at what point in this schedule would we be approaching our best practices? Would we have to wait all the way to the end?
The prioritization was on the building envelope, particularly on the city side, which is a wise decision, because again, if the roof starts to leak, everything else is potentially getting damaged. We literally didn't get to the sort of more quality of life or quality of work-life types of items, even in itemizing them in the list. It was really focusing on big systems and building envelopes. So to bring the buildings up to, you know, a level of comfort, a level of where the public, you know, feels like, wow, I'm in a great building, that's another magnitude of projects that we don't even have documented.
Because that would be of interest to me. I would like to say, okay, you know, we're going to spend all this money if we so, if we push this, is at what point are we going to start to see the results? I think that's big, especially for our taxpayers when we're doing these types of things, so...
Unfortunately, Counselor, when we looked at the dollars and cents, again, the number was originally up at $71 million. You know, financially, we just couldn't do it, so the focus was on the building envelopes, again, the roofs, the masonry, the windows, and of course, the internal mechanical structures. But unfortunately, you're not going to see a lot of improvement, I'll be candid, other than, I think, some of the ADA stuff, you'll see visually, you'll see some changes, but a lot of the work that's being recommended is not going to really substantially alter the visible and the visual appearances of the structures, but it's clearly going to preserve and protect their useful life.
But we're still, once this work is done, these buildings are going to be usable, is that right?
Yes, yes, Counsel. And I think the plan as well was when we start, I mean, we routinely budget money every year, but I think when you look about replacing carpeting, and maybe adding new counters, and maybe doing some modifications to counters and those kinds of things, I mean, that will continue to be in the operating budget, and the level of those projects, as Monica mentioned, I think it was $100,000 threshold of project amount that was addressed in this. So all of those other items would hopefully be addressed on a, as part of the pay-as-you-go.
I think, and this will conclude my remarks, but when we get to the facilities conclusion, and we get to the challenges, and these have been the challenges, I think we understand them, but when you see them in black and white, you kind of go, you know, significant understaffing, lack of work order system and technology, lack of preventive maintenance, city facilities may not be aligned with operational needs. You look at it and you go, wow, we got our work cut out for us, boy, it's unbelievable. And this is just, just years of neglect that's gone on, and it's just sad. But I appreciate your work, too. This makes it pretty, it sums it up fairly nicely, pretty easy to understand, I appreciate it. Hopefully, we can get together and start to do some work on this stuff, so with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. You bring up some good point, and this, this is really just the tip of the iceberg, this is just the building facilities itself. We're not even talking about equipment capital or infrastructure capital that the city's in dire need of, so I think that's important for the public to really appreciate and understand. Counselor C6, Counsel Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. President, and forgive me for being so rude, but Monica, I know your name is Monica, but what was your last name?
Lamboy.
Lamboy, okay, I ought to write that down. I would like to compliment you on this study, and I'll tell you, and I know it wasn't only you, there were other people, but I guess you spearheaded the personnel that came down. It's the most comprehensive study I've seen on our buildings in quite some time, but I've got a couple of questions. Ms. Viveras, have you done any study as to what the new positions that are recommended in this study, what they're going to cost to the city? I'm not talking about the overall cost, we've got that, but we don't have any cost relative to how much is going to be added to the budget to bring these people on board. And my second part of that question would be, I think they're sorely needed and probably should have been on board a long time ago, and a lot of these buildings are in this shape because we didn't have personnel. And I know that Ken Pacheco, when he was on the city side on numerous occasions, told me that he needed more help in this area, and I think if you talk to Chris Gallagher and John Perry... And I think if you talk to Chris Gallagher and John Perry, they'll tell you the same thing. But has any studies been done as to what this is going to reflect in the budget and the cost?
Certainly, Counselor. So as you know, in the two thousand eighteen budget, when we presented it to you, we presented to you the project manager and the architect. They were both in the budget, and it was the council's view that they needed to be cut from the budget. So those dollars that are represented in the two thousand eighteen budget are realistically the dollar value of the two individuals that the Collins Center in this report are recommending that we add to the staff. Unfortunately, we're not able to add it to the staff this year as a result of the cuts, but we will be presenting it in the two thousand nineteen budget. I further want to just add as a remark, if you will, with regard to the local receipts, it was a lot of concern with regard to this council with the local receipts. But in fact, the two thousand eighteen budget for the local receipts is lower than the two thousand seventeen actual local receipts. So we've already heard from DOR that the recap will be approved with no problems. So when you cut the local receipts, you actually cut them lower than the two thousand seventeen actual.
Well, you know, it's good to talk about the cuts to the budget, which were a million dollars. But the fact of the matter is, we never had a plan. Now we do. That makes a big difference in, I think, on many of the votes that would be taken today as to what was going on then, because there was absolutely no plan. Now we do have a plan. I would also point out that it's essential that we get our, the envelopes of these buildings buttoned up. And you make an excellent point. This just addresses, as my colleague and President said, this is the tip of the iceberg of what's going on in the city. Because this is only addressing, it's not addressing the entire problems that are in the city. It's addressing part of the problems, because if we put the entire problems out there, this, the cost factor would be much greater. Would you agree with that, Ms. Lamboy?
Yes, I would agree.
The Wiley School, we keep talking about it. Right now, it's being used for cold storage. It was never a building that the city, or the school department, Mr. Pacheco, the school department never really wanted to get rid of. Do they have designs on using that building in a different way than cold storage down the road?
That one's a flat tire, so to speak.
The building is currently being used for cold storage, and they're on, we don't have any plans in the very near future. The building has been closed down for quite some time. It would take an architect to give us a study. It was done a while back to determine what would have to be done to reopen the building. So my best guess is that it's anywhere from a four-point-five to five-point-eight million-dollar renovation, which would mean the upgrades are kind of in the same realm as the Westall, only without insurance proceeds to help us out. So the short answer is, we don't have plans currently. It's a one-unit school, which, from the operational side, would cost us a lot more to run per student, opening that building up. We do have a need in the north end, as we do in the middle of the city, for space, for school space. However, that building right now is not something we can turn over real quick.
You know, Mr. Pacheco, I would have to say that you're probably one of the people in this city that has the greatest understanding of our buildings on the city side and the school department side, because of your expertise and your, having been involved in all of these buildings. What is, did you read this entire plan? Have you seen it or read it?
I've lived it along with Mr. Gallagher since it started. We've lived it, along with Monica and the other staff that were here. There's a lot of time hours into that. And again, we had a lot of backup information to go along with the study and the walkthroughs.
Well, I'll tell you, now, have they prioritized the buildings that should be done first, second, third, so on and so forth? Was that part of this plan also, Ms. Lamboy?
Yes, the final package that is presented as proposed capital investment was a collaborative effort, where we did have that conversation about, you know, what needs to go first, what are the most critical, and then what would flow after that.
And where does the Armory fit in this whole study? I know it's part of it, but where does that fit in the whole study?
In terms of the capital plan, we did not recommend putting any general funds into that building. It's a tremendous asset. But in terms of the other occupied building needs, they really surpassed that one. It does seem like it would be eligible for grant funding, historic preservation monies, but there would need to be a concerted effort to sort of seek those out and program the building for uses that would make sense.
The reason I ask that is because I think that's a facility that we've got to preserve, and I don't see the probably, anybody rushing to help that building, because it's unfortunately in such disrepair that any good rainstorm, snowstorm, or any event like that could in fact be catastrophic to that building. Would you agree with that?
Counsel, the Armory is a building that, you know, we've been systematically addressing. We have been using grant funds, and actually, a lot of it was during Mr. Pacheco's time, so he can probably give you more detail on that. But we did do the comprehensive study, and then each year, we've been applying to do additional work. I do not believe that at this point in time, we have any major faults, if you will, within the building that could cause any serious internal or interior damage. Mr. Pacheco, right, I think the roof has been addressed. Perhaps you can give us an update.
Sure. The main issue that we had with the building was the chimney. The chimney on the east side of the building, the non-used chimney, was in desperate need of repair. It was major blocks, all the granite blocks were popping out due to frost and water infiltration. And the, that chimney was taken down to the roof level. It was the, all of the blocks were categorized, and we were able to rebuild that using CPA funds. The roof right now is the second part of that project, and the roof, which we call the middle roof, that roof there would be, again, under CPA funding. And I think that project is either starting or is in design phase right now.
So would you say it would withstand a major storm?
It's getting close to that. I think that there's, I think we've taken care of the main issues that we were very concerned with, and that's, that was what Chris capitalized on. I also, you know, the upper roof needs work, but I think that we spent an awful lot of time shoring that roof, putting in some extra petitions inside to take care of any of the deficiencies we had in the structural system.
Okay. Well, Ms. Lamboy, did you have something to say?
I just want to add, Counsel, because I think it's an important point. When we look at the staffing in particular, I know last year, there was some concern raised by councils, because it took us a while to get the washer-dryers installed and a couple of the fire stations, and it was because Mr. Gallagher was trying to do it with his own staff, one electrician, one plumber, and of course, himself. But they ran into complications. But I will tell you that this year, they actually went out for bid to try to continue that project, and initially, there were no respondents. So we have to try again to get people to come in and do the work. But when you have people on staff, oftentimes, you can complete projects that you would otherwise even hire a private vendor to do, or in this particular case, you're almost unable to do, because you're just not getting any vendors to respond. So I think there's an added benefit to the staffing that's being required, because it would enable us to take on some additional, more challenging projects, do them cost-effectively, and while it may take a little bit longer, at least they get accomplished. And in some instances, we're really struggling to get those projects done by going out to bid.
Okay. One more quick question on the Armory. When do you anticipate that it will be suitable for people to be using that building again?
And Mr. Pacheco may have additional comment. My understanding is, a lot of the problem now is the ADA accessibility. I believe we would have to get the elevator, right, you have to have access to all floors, and I'll defer to Mr. Pacheco for more detail. But there are some access issues at a minimum that we're going to have to address, as well as some additional mechanicals.
Because with the time, it's been closed.
No, I think it's just a matter of bringing it up to code, Mr. Pacheco.
So the value of the property plays a big part in these repairs. You cannot exceed repairs equaling thirty percent of the value of the property. Once you exceed that, you trigger all of the upgrades. So we have to be careful with even some of the school repairs that we do to stay beneath that thirty thousand dollar, thirty percent range, or it triggers all of this. What's happening at the Armory is, these repairs, the chimney was in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. The roof is going to be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. It's not going to take us long to hit the assessed value of that property. And once we hit that, all of those other issues come into play.
By law?
By law, yes.
Ms. Lamboy, I want to thank you for this, for the work and study that UMass, I'm sorry, was it UMass Boston?
UMass Boston, Counsel.
Did on this facility, and I appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor in seat three, Counsel Kamara.
Thank you. I do appreciate the work that's been done. Just procedurally, we have this report now. I'm assuming that we have some time to absorb it and at some point, come back with some recommendations and suggestions. What's the plan?
Yes, Counselor, we've actually estimated, and you have the document, we've actually anticipated the timing of some of the projects, and there's a schedule of those projects available for you. We would appreciate the council's input regarding the timing of those projects. These, we looked at the timing based on a combination of factors, certainly priority and necessity, but also the financial constraints that were necessary. But the council, in looking at it, may want to make other decisions in terms of the timing of those projects. So once we're all in agreement as to when each of those projects should be completed, then if they are, projects are going to require loan order, then we would prepare the loan documents, and we would come back to the council to get approval for the loan. Some of them are being funded through general fund, in which case, we'll be including in those dollar allocations in the FY nineteen budget. So it, I think what we would appreciate from the council at this juncture is the opportunity, certainly, to review the report in greater detail and to just confirm that the scheduling and the order of the projects is consistent with your collective interest. Before we start bringing down loan orders, because we don't want to come down, you know the process for loan order, we have to get bond counsel involved, we have to advertise, and we don't want to go through those administrative exercises and expenses only to find out that you'd like the projects done in a different order. So we would appreciate your input on that.
Aside from the timing of the projects?
Yes.
I mean, by and large, I see that most of these are necessary activities, but I do see a few that I don't think we ought to be even considering.
Okay, so that's
That we ought to be dropping from this list.
That's input that certainly we would appreciate, so.
Okay, so how do we proceed with that? Is there going to be a return to the council for a discussion on the projects specific, and whether or not, you know, I'd like to suggest at least one project that we ought to scrap, as an example.
Well, you can certainly share that with us now, Counselor, if you like, or we can have a future discussion.
Well, I've been a strong advocate, and this really goes to the fact that we've got so much vacant space, and I know the school department has space as well. I've been a strong advocate that the school administration building at four-seventeen Rock Street is a perfect building to put back on the tax rolls. There are families in Fall River that are large families. I think of the family that's diagonally across from the Historical Society with the triplets, and I'm sure we all know the family, professional family, a lawyer and a doctor. They have four children. They took over a building that was formerly the executive offices of Waring Ashton Funeral Home. They've turned it into a beautiful structure on Rock Street. It is their residence, and they've turned it back on to the tax rolls. I think four-seventeen Rock Street is a similar building. It's beautiful, it's a mansion, it's something that you and I probably wouldn't want to occupy. I certainly wouldn't want to occupy it. But there are families that are interested, and if we're going to want to draw to Fall River those kinds of families that can afford a sixteen-room house and can bring it back to its grandeur, then we ought to be doing that. So I don't see that as a building that we ought to be investing in. I think that's a building that we ought to challenge the administration, to, school administration, to find space within its properties to locate the administration. I don't think there's any need for the administration to be at a mansion on Rock Street. I think they can be in one of our school buildings. I've often considered two-ninety Rock Street, the technical building of the former Drefy High School, that was used both by Cuss and Morton as a middle school, now the Resiliency School. Resiliency School is not occupying a hundred percent of that building. The old library, the Keely Library, which faces Rock Street, would be a magnificent administrative office, and there are other rooms within that very large building. And that would generate, I believe, if you put the superintendent and his staff into that building, then that would generate more money going into that building, so that we can save the auditorium, the last auditorium in the center of the city. So without going into a lot of detail, there ought to be an opportunity for counselors and the council itself to weigh in, and for the administration to talk to us about, is it feasible to find another place for administrative offices? I think it is. And it would put the, you know, we all want additional revenue. That would be a place where we could sell that building. I think there would be a market for it, and it would then be on the tax roll, paying taxes every year. So that's one example.
Certainly, Counsel, and I think it's certainly the council's wish, if you wanted to refer the matter of, you could leave it in finance, and then it would be a full council discussion. You could perhaps refer it to the Committee on Public Works and Transportation. I think they might handle municipal buildings for more in-depth analysis. And I appreciate your input. I mean, that is a, because that affects the school department, I think we may need to have them chime in as to whether they're willing to forego their school administration building. But that's probably a dialogue that needs to be had with the school committee. I don't know if Mr. Pacheco, certainly, he answers to a school committee, so I don't know that he could comment on the fate of that. But I think clearly, that is the kind of input we appreciate, and it may require a different conversation.
Yeah, I don't, see, I don't see that this is the time for that conversation. I think this is the time for us to absorb the process, absorb the suggestions, and proceed. It happens that another project that I see is sort of putting good money after bad is the Talbot Middle School. You know, it's a school that I think has outlived its time. And it's an all-electric school, as an example. I mean, whoever would think that you'd have an all-electric building, and yet, we own one? So, and that's a two-point-three million dollar expenditure, so that's a pretty good chunk. So maybe we look for an alternative for the Talbot Middle School.
Interesting, Counsel. We looked at that one, and Mr. Pacheco quickly reminded us that to build a new school would be a major investment. So I think sometimes, you also have to evaluate whether you want to put money into renovation as opposed to new construction, and, you know, what the cost benefit. But I think we would all concur with you that electric heat is not very efficient.
Right. So I do think there's a time for a conversation about, what is our educational plan for the next hundred years? You know, we're going to be discussing a bit later in the council meeting, a quarter of a billion-dollar high school project. a quarter of a billion-dollar high school project. I think that's not, that's not on your list, but it is an issue, and I know my colleague in Seat One has been talking about that a lot, that we just went through an election cycle, and we hardly discussed that major elephant in our city and what we're going to do about that. So anyway, I will let that go. I do have a specific question about, and it may even tie in with my vision that I'm working on, which is the suggestion of a new space for vehicles and for the community maintenance department. Would that be, is the suggestion for a new space or the renovation of an existing space? What is, what is the consideration there? If you could expand upon that?
That level of consideration was not part of our effort. We were merely pointing out that, that that is an investigation that should happen. It just does not seem to be appropriately situated for the, for the operation. But, but the recommendation was specifically to look at all of the city functions and catalog what their space needs would be. Then you can look at it comprehensively and see, you know, some of those suggestions you had where maybe this use can move someplace else, and something else could backfill, and then everybody ends up in a better, better position, but certainly.
Because, because I too find it, as one of my colleagues, I think it may have been Counselor Mitchell, suggested that, looking at a 60% vac, 60% lack of use in our, in our public buildings, and then we're renting space. And that's one of the examples. We're renting space to store buildings and supplies. We should own a building that can store our vehicles and supplies. We shouldn't be renting space. There are other rentals there that I think we ought to be getting out of, too, the senior set, senior centers, even though I think that comes from CDA money. But that's another thing. I think that there are places in, in public buildings where that ought to be happening. So I look forward for, to further discussion. I think your suggestion that maybe we table this matter in finance and we come back to it again, because this clearly is a big chunk of funds. It ties into other big chunks of funds. And, and again, there is something that's coming forth that I, I will be discussing at greater length, that I think we need to look at a 100-year educational plan that might take into account the Talbot Middle School and Diamond Regional Vocational School and Druffy High School, Druffy III. And, and maybe we can do something that will look to the future so that we're not in a position, as we are now, of having gone through Druffy I after 140-plus years on Rock Street, and now we're looking at a Druffy II that's going to be obsolete after 40 years of use. And I don't want us to do a Druffy III that's also going to be obsolete in 40 years, because that's the way we build buildings nowadays. We build them to dispose of them. And to think in terms of putting a quarter of a billion dollars of taxpayer money into a property that likely will be demolished in 40 years is not very sure. And I don't expect to be here, and I know most of us won't be here in 40 years, but we need to leave something for our future generation that is more than a 40-year plan. So with that, I yield. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Right here.
Counselor C. Four.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. How long did this process take? I know you said you were here in the summer.
Yeah. It was, yeah. It's, yeah, I think last, we probably started last fall, so more or less a year.
And the, but did I hear you say you didn't get to go to all the buildings?
I did not. My, my colleague went to a large number of the buildings.
Okay. So on the ones that they didn't go through, are the repairs or any suggestions made based solely through the input of the city? Okay.
So, yes, for the, I want to be clear on that. The capital projects came from the work of Chris Gallagher and Ken Pacico, who really know those buildings so well. What we did was take their information and catalog it. We did an independent scoring of it using our understanding so that we would help the administration sort of prioritize. In addition to the staff's internal expertise, our separate scoring helped us kind of all come together with the prioritization that is before you.
Okay. And I just had a couple of questions throughout. With the unused and vacant buildings, is there a recommendation to reutilize them or sell them?
A, a large share. I know we're spending a lot of time talking about that 60% figure, which is a, a big figure. A lot of that is the private tax-held property, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
But the ones that are city-owned, because we have, seem to have a problem selling our city buildings. Nobody seems to want them. Would you recommend that we reutilize them, or is there a recommendation on those?
The, the recommendation is to really go through a process, to have that conversation, to really understand what the needs are. This city is not unique in that you have municipal operations in an older building where the wiring is not used to computers, where the customers may be wanting to do more work remotely, you know, communicate with you remotely. You don't need to have as many customer-facing counters. So it's actually a healthy conversation to have, to assess what do we actually need as a city operation, and how does that fit with what we happen to own, or not fit with what we happen to own.
Okay. And under the school facilities, it says we have 19, and then it breaks them down into the administrative buildings, the middle schools, the high school, and then the Resiliency School. Are the balance of those all elementary?
Yes. Elementary and K-3. We have two K-3s.
Okay. And some of these were answered. The architect and the project manager in the building department, well, we brought up the architect position, or you brought the architect position down to ordinance. And in ordinance, I remember that we asked for a breakdown of the architect expenses prior so that we could see how much we were spending outside and what it would cost to bring it in-house. And then it came to us on full council, and we had asked for that again. And just recently, I saw Chris Gallagher, I know he said he was going to be out, but I don't, I said that I still don't think that we have that, and he was under the impression that he had sent that. Do you know if we have that?
I think what happened, Counselor, when it got cut from the budget, we didn't think that.
But he said, we had asked for much prior to that.
Prior to, correct.
And that, he said that he had put that together. Do you have that?
He had some numbers together, but there was a question as, and Mr. Pacico may be able to help. There are some projects that require an independent architect. I think it's probably some of the school projects, Mr. Pacico, so he can explain. So we, what we were doing is we were looking at the cost for architectural services, but then recognizing that in some instances, we needed to get
Right.
An independent, because they weren't allowing in-house architect, Mr. Pacico.
So for instance, the accelerated repair program through MSBA,
Right.
Which is the two projects right now, Tanzi and Watson. MSBA chooses the OPM, the owner's project manager, and also chooses the designer. So we, the city wouldn't be able to utilize this person to, for any of that work. And then any larger construction through MSBA would fall under the same criteria unless that person met all of the qualifications that MSBA would require. So there are some projects that would be able to work on, and then other projects that that person would not be able to.
And just to clarify, too, Mr. Pacico, some projects, we can use our own OPM and others, we can't?
Exactly.
So I was under the impression that of the ones that we can, it would be a cost savings? That's why he was going to put those figures together?
Yes.
And I think it would be helpful. I asked him for it maybe a month ago. That's when he said that he had done that.
Yeah, we can certainly put that together for you, Counselor. And again, I think it's evolved. Originally, it was going to be an architect, but then Collins Center recommended somebody that, that the individual would serve as an OPM under some circumstances as well, hence your recommendation.
So this is, this is a dual role? This isn't two separate roles?
No.
Counselor Two, one of the problems, if you will, are issues with regard to doing that analysis for you with regard to the architect, is that a lot of the billings that we've received over the last year or two were combined billings. And so some of the architects have subbed out certain parts of their projects. So we weren't able to look at the invoice and really be able to tell you what the true cost of that architect was, because the invoice is a combined invoice. The other thing that came to light when I went through a lot of those invoices with Mr. Gallagher were that in some instances, not only did the architect work on the project, but they had a staff individual in their office working on the project. That information was not put forth on their invoice clearly enough in order to provide to the Council strictly the cost of the architect.
Okay.
So he does have a schedule together, but it's the entire cost of architectural services, and it really doesn't answer your question.
So we wanted to have him break it all down to give you accurate information.
But he's not going to be able to do that.
We need to isolate. He'd have to talk to the vendors.
Exactly. Just, just because you were presenting and he was presenting that it would be a cost savings, so we need to, we must
Certainly.
Know that figure from somewhere.
And as I said, Counsel, we, we were working on it in earnest, and then when the position was cut from the budget, we shifted gears and went in another direction. I do want to also, though, go back to the issue of the project manager. That was another position that we feel very strongly, and the Collins Center is recommending that that get reinstated ASAP. So we're even trying to figure out if we can find budgetary funds to do that. Mr. Gallagher, at the present time, has over 45 projects, individual projects, that he alone is managing. And I'll, I'll be very candid with you. I, I think we're really setting him up to fail
Right.
Because of the volume of work that he's being asked to do. So you, you certainly have choices. I mean, we had the architect, OPM option. We had the project manager, which I think is more critical, and then the tradespeople, electrician, plumber. So I think that when we ultimately come back to you, if we have to set priorities again, it may be clearly, project manager will be at the top of the list, but also we may opt for some of these trades positions as well.
Okay. So, but again, just to clarify, the, the architect slash project OPM, does, do you see that as one position or two?
I see it as one position.
Okay. Thank you. And then, on page eight, under the recommendations, it says establish cost centers to determine spending on individual buildings, including time spent. Isn't this something that we do now? Because we, I remember we had an issue where they were saying some funds for some projects were being used on other projects. We do track the buildings that.
I think the institution referring to, Counsel, was for capital projects.
Okay. So if it's not a capital project, we're not tracking which building?
Mr. Gallagher has a huge wall, and he tracks all of his projects. My guess is that we could put together some, using some manual files, a rough idea of how much time is being spent. But as Monica has mentioned, you really need an automated system to be able to track that in an effective level of detail. Now, Mrs. Sahadi has been working with Chris to try to get them broken down. I don't know if she is ready to comment on that.
Yes, so Counselor, what we, as you saw with the past budget, we've increased the number, and Monica referred to it today. We increased the number of general ledger accounts that Mr. Gallagher is now utilizing. But realistically, from an accountant's point of view, in order to really do it by the project, we have to have a work order system.
Okay.
Because we would have to have a separate payroll account even
Mm-hmm.
For each individual who works on multiple projects during a given week. And the unit system is not set up right now to handle that kind of allocation to general ledger accounts.
Okay. Let's answer it. On page 10 of the fire departments, it says commission assessment of fire operations to determine the facility's needs. I was under the impression when we were having conversations about the conditions of the fire stations that this, this was going to do that.
I'm sorry, Counsel, the last part of your question, please?
I was under the impression that the community compact was going to give us the determination of the facility's needs, but the recommendation is, says commission assessment of fire operations to determine facility's needs.
Again, you, you have a spreadsheet that talks about the individual items by department.
Right.
So I'm, I'm sorry, are you looking?
If I could answer that?
Okay, sure.
I, I think there's two levels of analysis. What we do have is an understanding, at least of the envelope of the existing fire stations, what the, what is needed for those.
So that you're suggesting a further determination of the rest of the building?
What, there are groups that can look at your service calls and determine where the stations make sense to be located. Some of the stations are older, blanking on the name of one of them is rather old.
Central station.
Yeah. So I think a question could be asked of people who are, have expertise in this area. Given that this facility is so old, is there another optimal location to maintain the, the standards that we have as a community? And then you can talk about how to, how to deploy that building for perhaps a different purpose.
Okay. So that would just break it down more of what they needed. This was just the envelope on the stations.
Right. Okay. But Counselor, you, I do, and I don't, I think you've got the same page here, on, on page eight in your document, under fire. It does have all of the key projects listed
Right.
And a description. So that's what I was getting at. We, we've done some analysis by station as to what items need to be addressed.
But they're suggesting further analysis, more detailed of each station?
In terms of utilization, I think is what you're.
Yeah. What's the optimal location, taking into account the age, your current investment in the buildings, what makes sense for, for where they should be located?
So when we've been talking about doing these fire buildings, is that something you would suggest we do? I know that you have different fire projects on here. Is that something that you suggest we do before we spend, start spending money on the stations?
As far as I understand, all those projects that are included in the capital plan are very needed now.
Right.
And to delay them would not be a, it could get worse. The situation could get worse.
Okay. Okay, and I do agree with tabling this and having that discussion on the specifics and prioritization. Thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor C. One. Counselor Kamara.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, again, I'm going to say that it's great to have an outside set of eyes kind of taking a look at the city, somebody with the kind of experience that you have. And real quick, can you tell me about the Moving Oakland Forward Initiative? And I looked a little bit into your background, and I saw that you did something over there and with reorganization. Can you tell me a little bit about that, and if it could potentially pertain to something that would happen over here?
Sure. I used to work for the City of Oakland a couple lifetimes ago. The Moving Oakland Forward was a literally top-to-bottom organizational study of the city operations, where teams of staff, there were 300 staff who participated in subgroups, some outside their department expertise and some within, to sort of, you know, parks maintenance. We looked at the budget process, just a whole slew of operations, municipal operations, and came up with, with recommendations of changes. An example was, we recommended a two-year budget cycle, which is doable in California, and they implemented that. So it was a great, a great initiative.
Okay. And do you think that a municipality like ours could benefit from an initiative where we're kind of looking at, looking at it from a top-down approach, like you did it with the?
I, I think there's a lot of benefits. The, the staff, you're really tapping directly their expertise. They have a lot of commitment to the process, because they can see, you know, the results in their organizations afterward. It's, it's a lot of work. We did have an outside consultant that sort of, as an umbrella level, helped organize the effort, but we, we did the day-to-day work within the organization.
And what did the benefit end up being? Obviously, there was a cost-benefit analysis done at the end. What did the benefit end up being at the end of that?
It's, it's a while.
I know I'm asking you to go way back.
I was particularly on the budget team, so I'm very familiar with that. A lot of what we recommended did get implemented. There were a bunch of other teams that, I'm not totally sure, you know, now how much of it got implemented.
Okay.
But, but it comes up with similar ideas here, where you'd have specific findings and specific action recommendations.
And that's built in to your proposal here with the, well, realistically, you're talking about capital improvement. What would a process like that cost today if a city like this size had to undertake something like that? Obviously, we're talking about different-sized cities.
I'd have to get back to you on that.
Sure thing. And I'll give you my email at the end, or you can find my email, I'm sure. But thank you so much for the work that you've done for the City of Fall River. I really appreciate it. I yield.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Motion to table?
Second.
Motion to table was made by Counsel Purr, second by Counsel Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, so voted. Motion carries. I want to thank the Collins Center for all the hard work and the partnership
Thank you, Ken.
And the administration for coming down and presenting it. I do just want to point out, Counselor on Seat One brings up a good point, I think. The questions that you were just asking are in line with the performance audit. We've kind of discussed, kicked around doing performance We've kind of discussed, kicked around doing performance audit within our various departments. I know we've started a couple of years back with the Water Department or the Sewer Department. So that's something we should start looking at, even if we do one department at a time throughout the year, so. Thank you. Were you going to say something, Council? Seat seven?
No.
No, I just thanked Mr. Pacheco as well for coming down.
Item number two is a, two items for, requesting for a transfer, $188,000, that the sum of $188,000 be, and the same is hereby appropriated to the EMS capital outlay, outlay account from the EMS stabilization fund for the purchase of capital items, including an above-ground storage tank, the purchase of a pickup truck, a sedan for the transfer, M.I.H. division, an EKG monitor-
Motion for full counsel.
Laptop, as well as a power load system now required by state regulations. The second is $300,000. That the sum of $300,000 be the same is hereby appropriated to the EMS capital outlay account from the EMS stabilization fund for the purchase of an ambulance and related equipment for the transfer slash M.I.H. division.
Motion for full counsel.
Second. Motion for full counsel was made by Council, though it is already in full counsel, so we don't need a motion. Is there discussion on this?
No.
No discussion. Council Vice President, will you come forward? I got questions.
Council President?
Thank you. Just looking at the brief explanation that you had given us with regards to the $188,000, I have a couple of questions. The first one, the above-ground storage tank for the fire department EMS, you're stating that we need a gas, above-ground gasoline storage tank for fueling up of EMS, I'm assuming it's EMS, since it's coming out of the EMS account. Reason being that DBW is accessible, however, there are multiple pumps that are down, causing employees to use their own cash to purchase fuel. The cost to install this is $38,000, including the electrical installation. So I've just got a couple of questions. I, you know, to me, I don't know that it makes sense to appropriate $38,000 for a new gasoline system when the current system that we have isn't working. So I, I think it might be money well-spent when we start talking about looking at fixing the problem and looking at the DBW location. So that'd be number one. I'm just curious as to what, what that costs. Have we looked at the cost of repairing the DBW gasoline tanks, upgrading them? And then also, the second part to that question is, where would this above-ground storage tank be located? When we start looking, when we start talking about DBW, I think it's centrally located in terms of, of the city. So I'm just curious as to where that's going.
Sure. As far as where it would be located, it would be located right at the maintenance building at headquarters. Currently, we have an above-ground tank for diesel, so some of our apparatus get fueled up there also. There's a spot where we could put this above-ground tank, and it would actually supplement the DBW tank. So even if we did renovate the DBW tank, there's always going to be a need for an emergency supply in that case. But it could also still be utilized just in everyday use, because we have several ambulances located at the North End, Councilor.
Right. So I, so I get that, and I respect that, but I-
Yeah.
...think the location doesn't make sense, at least from my standpoint. So if we're running out of gasoline, we're going to send everybody to the North End, so we got to jump, jump on Airport Road to get gassed up. That's where headquarters is, right?
Yes.
So, again, when we start talking about EMS, I know our EMS vehicles are strategically located, so somebody, if DPW's down, we've got a EMS vehicle that needs to get gassed up in the district on Globe Street, driving all the way to Airport Road. Police Department, they have their own gas tanks as well. So why wouldn't we just utilize the police department?
Yeah, so, so the ambulances themselves are diesel, so obviously, if the pumps are down at, at the DPW, our trucks have to come up, we already have diesel tanks. Most of our gasoline vehicles are stored up north, including the new squad, and that's where we're running into the issues, is our squad, since September, has averaged over 1,000 calls. So, I mean, it's constantly moving, and they've been struggling to get fuel, so most of the lieutenants have been filling up with our credit cards and giving us the receipts.
Yeah. So I recognize that. So I guess my first question, I probably should just ask one question at a time. What was the cost to just upgrade and fix the problem over at DPW?
Mr. President, we're still working on that, because the problem, actually, it's better than we thought it originally was. We did have DEP go in and take a look at the tank. Originally, they thought that the tank was going to have to be removed, but they determined that because of the nature of the fabrication of the tank, that it can stay. So originally, thinking we had to redo the tank system. Now, we're just, I believe the system is working now, and it, and it's up and running. I'm not aware of any problems.
So my, just my recommendation, and take it for what it's worth, I appreciate the effort. I won't support this, because I think, number one, we just talked about capital. I think there is way more important capital items. You're asking me for $38,000. My easy, quick solution or recommendation is fix the DPW gasoline tanks, make sure that the police department is upgraded and needs to be where it's at to, to make sure that it's maintained. If there's an issue about gassing up, make sure that whoever the districts are, that they have a city credit card. Reimbursements, I'm not quite sure that, that really becomes a major issue. But I think a simple solution at no cost is to issue, you know, the different stations or EMS drivers a, a card that can be monitored by the, by the city to fill up on gas if they need it. That's $38,000, a couple of, you know, electrical, electricians to go in there, fix some electrical work in some of our, our fire stations. So that's, that's one concern I have. The second one is, is the, the request for the pickup truck. We got 130,000 miles on the one that's currently being used, so we're, we're talking about the maintenance division. Are we, are we talking about DPW maintenance division?
No, no, that, that's an EMS vehicle.
That's internally?
Yes, it's an EMS vehicle.
All right, so that one, so that is being used internally by you folks, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so I'm, I'm okay with that one. I mean, those, those are the concerns I have with those, those two particular items.
Just, just a further comment too, Mr. President, on the credit card system. I mean, we, obviously, we can pay for the fuel less expensively than if they're buying it, you know, at retail rates. So there is a, there is a cost savings, and because of the volume that they're utilizing, we felt that it might be worthy of a second installation. DPW is up and running, but again, it's, it's in the center, and EMS felt that it would be certainly much quicker and more efficient for them to be able to keep the vehicle in the North End of the city, so, for gas purposes. I understand.
I recognize it, but I mean, when we start looking at all our fire stations, they're not really in the, headquarters is not really strategically located, right? I mean, I think we'd all agree. I think it's there because there was space. When you look at it from a strategic standpoint, if, if it was a perfect world, headquarters wouldn't be on Airport Road, right? So I think when we start looking at backup for gasoline, I don't know that we want to just follow suit and put the, you know, the tanks in the North End on Airport Road. I just, that's just my own take on this. So the second request is $300,000 for an ambulance. Can you just expand on that a little bit more? Are we replacing an ambulance? Is this a new ambulance?
Yeah. So basically, what we're doing is, we're going to place, replace Rescue Two out of the Flint Station, which is, we're replacing it six months early. That's the request is to replace it six months earlier than we were going to, so it got replaced in July. We're going to order it in July for the new fiscal year 19. We're going to begin, begin a pilot program for a non-emergency transfer service that we've been negotiating with the hospitals for more revenue, for EMS and fire. It'd be a combined thing. So what we're doing, instead of investing in a transfer truck that could only be utilized for transfers, we're going to replace the frontline piece for the emergency side, and that rescue that's getting replaced will be utilized as the transfer truck.
So, okay, so I'm okay with that. So I, I just want to go on the record unless there's a, a motion to reduce the $188,000 by the $38,000. I won't support it. I support all the other capital needs. I think that's absolutely needed. The EKG monitor, does that include leads, or is it just?
Yeah, that's a complete, that's a complete life PAC-15 monitor.
All right. Thank you. I yield.
Anybody else? No? Is there a motion?
I have.
Motion.
It's already, there already is a motion.
Council Cepseris?
I, I just want to caution, because one thing that we did kind of in the past, and I'm hoping that we learned from mistakes that we've made in the past, is transfer funds from stabilization in order to be able to pay for costs that came down the pipeline. I get that some of these are one-time costs, but those one-time costs sometimes grow based on how well we're keeping up and how well we're maintaining our things. We just saw the, the chart of what happens if we don't maintain our equipment. I just want to be to you and to you, Director Olivera, and the, the great Ms. Fons, congratulations again. Yes, just be wary of kind of maintaining everything so that we're not constantly tapping into stabilization. And I, I think we should prevent some of the things that we've seen in the past, at least when it comes to the general fund, at least when it comes to what happened in the school departments even. Because right now, you're, you're flush, you're plus flush, and I want to make sure that you stay that way. And if something comes down the pipeline where insurance regulation changes for some reason, and you're getting less reimbursements for calls, for whatever reason, you may need to tap into those stabilizations funds for something else. You may need to kind of front-load some of your pieces, because you're not going to be able to have a regular rotation and have to wait down the road. So again, I just want you to kind of plan for the worst and hope for the best. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Thank you, folks. This one person who signed up for citizen input after finance, that's Alexander Craig Carey. The address is Two Fieldstone, Westport, Mass. Subject matter is billboard resolution. Is there a motion to waive the rules?
Second.
Motion was made by Council Perez, seconded by Council Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, so voted. Motion carries.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a little bit unprepared, but I figured I'd speak about this resolution. My name's Alexander Carey. I am here to support the city councilor's request of resolution for the city and zoning board authority to withdraw the special permits for billboards. I am here independently of any individual or entity to oppose the proposal for eight new digital billboards, about 195 of 24. For those of you that don't know me, that don't know my background, I am a small business owner in the City of Fall River. I'm a sole proprietor, a licensed real estate broker. I am a Realtor and a member of the Greater Fall River Association of Realtors. I also dabble in some real estate development, and I am relatively pro-development. First, I would like to let the city councilors know that a butters of this proposal were just notified a week and a half ago. No butters were notified until now. My initial concern is that this proposal is on fast track for approval without greater citizen input. There are a number of concerns relating to this proposal, including relating to the eight interests of the Wetlands Protection Act and potential title issues. I have concerns of safety from the flickering of light and light pollution. There are concerns that this proposal will reduce the real estate value, specifically within a thousand-foot radius of the billboards. And I have concern about the impact on the historic character of Fall River. Several business owners have invested millions of dollars to renovate historic mill buildings such as, you know, commercial use and residential use. This is going to directly hurt that historic character and the property value of those facilities. There's been a lot of talk here tonight about saving the city taxpayers' money and saving the city for transitioning money from here to there. And on the surface, this proposal looks great. The problem with it is, I think that what was presented to you is originally for your adoption of this was a bit overstated. This is, you know, I think they said $10 to $15 million upfront that the city would get, which is a lot of money, but it, I think it's overstated. It's a revenue share, and I think it's going to impact businesses over the long term in the appraisal of property value of those businesses and properties. So what's the real value of those, this proposal? I asked the city council to adopt this resolution, to put a halt on the proposal, and allow for a larger public hearing through a subcommittee to allow the taxpaying citizens of this city to have greater input on this plan before two weeks.
Fifteen seconds.
And when I talk about this public hearing, I'm not talking about-
Waive the rules and allow the continuation.
Motion to waive the rules was made by Council Perez, our second. Second by Council Lobo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, so voted. Motion carries.
Take your time.
This one opposed.
When I talk about, when I talk about opening up a public hearing, I'm not, I'm not here to talk about being another obstructionist or, you know, trying to stop the proposal in tracks, but what I am here is to, you know, discuss the issues in greater, to a greater extent, and I'm here to come up with possible solutions to address any opportunity loss in the event that the billboard proposal is denied. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn finance?
So made.
Motion was made by Council Perez, seconded by Council Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, so voted. Motion carries. Committee on Finance is now adjourned.
Can we take a break?
Five minutes?
Yes, please.